All right, so what we will do is we will open our February board meeting. And so we're opening the February board meeting at 6:57. We will, just as a reminder for folks who have joined us, we are holding the meeting in person. We have the full board here in person tonight. So the meeting will proceed in person with the work of the board being done here. If for some reason we lose our technology access that we are providing, there are minutes being taken for this meeting that will be available for review. So just to put a reminder on that, we will do, we're going to start the meeting by approving our agenda. Are there any changes or adjustments to the agenda for tonight?
I have a question. I don't know if you want to do public input after the grounds renovation playground, or if you want people to have public comment at the volunteering next week. Is it good not to do that?
I think we will do, we'll start with a public participation now, what's to come, and then we'll do, we'll have public comment at the volunteering next week. So the full discussion will come up there. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay, so we'll need a motion to approve the agenda. So I have a motion from Leslie. Can I get a second?
Second.
A second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so we'll open the meeting tonight with public participation as we normally do. We're going to be discussing the articles for the warrant later on in our agenda, as well as, as I mentioned, the grounds and playground renovation project. If folks have any comments with public participation now, they are welcome to speak here in person or to type into the chat of the virtual meeting. I'm going to say this so many times to you, to be so proud we brought that. If you could provide your name and address at the beginning of your comment so that we have that in the record. If you do provide that, then we will be able to read your comment publicly here. I just did this, but now I'm going to give it a few minutes to see if anyone has any comments to provide tonight. If there are questions that come forward during this time, just a reminder, public participation is a chance for the board to hear from the public. If there is a question that we have a quick answer to, we may provide it. More typically, we will hold on to that question or comment and make sure that it is addressed later on during the board's discussion and action items. The virtual access means that we're keeping people around for our February board meeting. While I'm waiting for if there's any comments, I am starting to wonder how long it will be that we haven't moved until the lights turn off. Because that always happens. We said, it's not used to a room of people sitting still. It's to a gym class.
Pretty well, we're waiting. I just want to be sure I'm clear about the process here.
Yes.
So I understand that next week, when there's a hearing on the bond, at that point, we'll move the article for the warrant.
Yep, so tonight we'll come up with what the final of what will be presented at the hearing. Yeah, next week. Yeah, I don't see anything coming in, so we'll go ahead and move on. So our first agenda item tonight is to move articles to the warrant. So tonight we are, we all accept the Article One, which is the bond. So we can open discussion for the board on any of the warrant articles that we just went through and highlighted. Sure, yeah. So Article Two will be to hear the reports. Any comments or discussion of Article Two? Okay, so we need a motion to move Article Two to the warrant. I have a motion from Denise and a second from Leslie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so we'll move on to Article Three. So Article Three will be the operating budget. So we need, it's their discussion of Article Three, the operating budget.
I need to read it.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Unless you have to read it.
I can read it. I'm happy to. Is it the same as February?
It's changed.
Okay, perfect.
And there's also a chance that later decisions in the board meeting could adjust the number. But okay, we can start with this.
All right. So to see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $10,253,736 for the support of schools, for the payment of salaries for the school district officials and agents, and for the payment of the statutory obligations of the district, and to authorize the application against appropriations of such sums as are estimated to be received from state and federal governments, together with other income, the balance to be raised by taxation by the school district. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately.
Function of the difference.
So it is unadjusted. Yeah, so that was one of the adjustments.
Did you give us the number again?
Thank you. Yes. Okay, so we have a motion to move this article to the warrant from Leslie.
Okay.
We have a second from Ed. Is there any further discussion for this item? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay. So we'll move forward. Is it the same? This one's the same. All right, so we have Article Four, the collective bargaining agreement. So we will need a motion to move Article Four to the warrant. This is the collective bargaining agreement to see if the Grantham School District will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Grantham School Board and the Grantham Education Association, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing level. For fiscal year 2022-23, estimated increase of $129,878. For fiscal year 2023-24, estimated increase of $118,971. And for fiscal year 2024-25, estimated increase of $118,181. And further to raise and appropriate the sum of $129,878 for the current fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels. The total cost over the three-year period equals $367,030. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay. And Article Five, which is to, I believe, to transact any other business.
Yes.
We need to, a motion to move Article Five, any other business, to transact any further business before this annual meeting to the warrant. So I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Christine. Any discussion of that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And Sydney, would you like us to discuss the special meeting for CBA?
Yeah.
Would you like to have that as a warrant article? So discussion of if we would like to add the language that Sydney discussed, so it would be the language saying, shall the Grantham School District, if Article Four is defeated, authorize the school board to call one special meeting at its option to address Article Four cost items only. So the thought behind this would be, should that article fail, there would be a special meeting called to handle the cost items associated with that. There are pros and cons to either that, and the board can discuss what we see as.
So I'm assuming that means that there would be a reopening of negotiations before that special meeting.
And this is not something that we have to do. It's our.
What would be the procedure if we didn't do this?
If we didn't? So if we did not do this, and if the, if Article Four failed, is that what you're asking for?
Yeah. And then CBA would stay as sales.
Yeah, then the, the.
Oh, the current.
The current one would move forward, but I believe there would be, have to be another negotiation for activities for next year.
Right.
So it would, I mean, it would be the same thing that would happen, you know, it would be what would happen if our, if the, if that article had failed previously.
But then you would not be operating with a full-time special ed director, correct? Because it would revert back to the current, but we need there's some downtime for that.
That's the CBA.
Oh, not necessarily. Yeah. Thank you. Oh, yeah.
I'll just talk about a few, like, the pro is that is you don't want the, you know, you want the contract to cut, obviously, because it's always better for the school, for the community and everything. But it does give you a chance to go back to a special meeting, you know, readjust the costs and go back again if it fails. The cons that you want to think about are that can bring some tough community relationships, you know, so if the community really comes out and does vote it down, it's tough to open it back up again and there will be concerns about, does nobody know where we're doing this again. And, and also, I think just thinking of our community, you would want to think about this as a, you know, responsible left of our meeting moving forward and generally a great community support of education. So those, those are the things that you want to weigh in terms of the current.
Yeah, and it feels, feels like bringing forth this option to the warrant. It doesn't exactly do this, but it almost like pulls into the question of our faith in the process. But tonight, we'll face that we've done a really nice job negotiating GEA and that we feel really good about presenting to the taxpayer. So it seems like, as I said, it's almost like. All of these questions. Yeah, so I am not really a favorite myself. I was going to make the same comment. So we don't, if we're not making this an article, we don't have to take it.
Nope.
Okay. Did you want, was this where we should also discuss the anticipated fund balance, or is that later? Okay. All right, so our next discussion and action item is the GBS grounds renovation and playground project. And I imagine you have a presentation and update for us.
I do, and I'm very excited to present to you about this. Well, I know a lot of people have been anxiously waiting to see what the plans look like because we had good participation from our community. And we had two concepts, Concept A, Concept B, and it wound up, of course, that everybody wanted Concept C. Tonight we get to take a look at Concept C and the bigger picture of what would be happening with this bond. So the purpose tonight really for the board is to go through the history of the plan, the plan itself, moving forward. And the board will tonight need to know what number we actually want to, we're going to put on that bond next week for volunteering, where if you have any questions or follow up about anything before we move forward to that part of the annual meeting process. So basically, we have a playground project that we have been working on for a long time, which is not just a playground project, but obviously a tremendous amount of site work because I think everybody's well aware of the fact that drainage has been a problem, not even the nature is a problem, not having the right credit that they're for kids, are all the things that we've been looking into. Just to give a brief history of the project, during the 2000 renovation, everybody was already aware that there were drainage problems and that the base generally didn't serve the needs of all students that already came up back then. And at that time, there was approximately $200,000 surplus in the total building project that was considered to take care of this and redesign the playground. The decision was made back then to hold off on that because plans for developing the Grantham Rec Park. And it was thought that it was best to wait to see how the rec park developed and how it would coordinate what was happening in the school. So this has been an issue at least since the 2000 renovation that we've talked about, that everybody was trying to just sort of wait to find out how they would both fit together for everybody in rhythm. In more current history, this proposed project was identified as a certain central need in our strategic planning process in 2017. And based on the estimates of the other playgrounds and some anticipated drainage and site work costs, the board proposed a bond for $500,000 last year. It did wind up failing by 21 votes, so we need 60% majority and that failed by 21. I got a lot of feedback after last year's annual meeting, and it revealed as the main concerns with the bond. There was a desire to see an actual plan and design prior to the vote. There was a desire to see the expected breakdown of costs related to the plan. And there was definitely a prioritization for the town board for the fire truck last year. So those were the main things that I heard about and required the bond to go through last year. Since last March of '21, we've released two RFPs. So we've completed a site survey, which completes all of our designs. That's already complete. And we've released another RFP to contract with a design engineer firm to create the conceptual design, which is also complete and it's been a really thorough process. So I know this is small, so I want to be able to, this, this isn't the one that I'm going to zoom in on, just to let you know I'm going to zoom in on the actual plan. This is our existing site survey, so this is what you would be looking at currently at GBS. So if you can see my cursor, this is where the school is. And then this is obviously Learning Drive, where you come in. This is our existing kind of dugout and kickball field. These are our two leach fields that are right here. This is where our current equipment and structures are. Open space, a lot of open space here, the dog outback, the horse, tennis courts, and the basketball court over there. So by doing this site survey, we were able to get the basic layout of our useful space and the concrete confirmed locations of septic, leach fields, current drainage irrigation systems. And then we did that in conjunction with the septic assessment. So the good news is that we don't really have to look into changing our septic system or removing the leach fields at this point. We're going to get a lot, a lot more time than them, which is a huge relief. The site survey provided us with information on how to fix the drainage issues in our design plan. We were able to complete soil assessments to look at not just the leach field, but how our soil will actually help drain and solve some of our drainage issues. It helped us to identify remnants from the septic smell. So for any who have been out there, there are some mornings where it's quite potent out there for the septic smell. And this is going to serve as our premise for all of our permitting work with this site survey. We worked with Horizon's engineers, something we wanted to work with. Then we started going through a process to identify our needs and priorities, which, once we've had this base site done. So the site survey plus our contracted designers, SE group, and they've also been fantastic to work with. We had multiple opportunities involving staff, students, and parent committee group sessions to provide input and feedback through the iterative process. So it's been going back and forth, looking at concepts, surveys, going back and forth to get to the final sum. There have been open sessions, surveys, and they came here to do onsite work with students, which I think people have heard that the fourth graders requested a jacuzzi, but unfortunately, that did not lead into the final plan. I can do this way while I'm right here. And throughout all of this, we've been having our meeting sessions with the GBS grounds renovation and playground committee, which is really great dedication for the people who have been getting this going for years now. So we very clearly, through this whole process, identified our needs and priorities. Fixing the drainage issues is number one. Allowing for the extension of all-season climate, not closing structures during freezing temperatures. Equipment needs for the bigger kids, and what came through very loud and clear was especially grades three through six, and especially climbing, something to climb on. ADA accessibility for all students. A commitment to GBS and Grantham values and connections to the outdoors. Sustainability, and outdoor learning through play. The increased importance of outdoor time now, especially with the pandemic and in the future, kind of like the social emotional benefits that kids are getting outside. That's not going to go away. We're going to keep that going and ask we continue to live for and recover from the pandemic. And we did hear feedback that kind of a major remedy and disconnect between the GBS facility, the quality of the education and the existing playground. So people, several people commented in these surveys about how we have an outstanding facility. We have an outstanding education that we provide here, and the playground doesn't meet both of those. It's at a different level. So here is the actual plan. Let's see if it's easy, it might be easier for me to zoom. I'm not sure. I'm going to go through the bigger picture first, and then if I need to go, I'll see if I can bring up the document to do differently than this. So where you're seeing all of these red boxes, which I don't need you to read, but all of those red boxes are things that the design company unfortunately had to remove. So of course, you go through the design process, and you identify all of your needs, and they come up with a beautiful Concept C. And the Concept C was $1.3 million that they put at us. And we really knew right away that that was something that we could put forward to the community. So we went through a whole other process with the grounds renovation and playgrounds committee to really cut and scale back everything. So all of these red boxes are things that we unfortunately had to cut back from the plan to be able to get to what we're proposing for the new one, which is $750,000. And I'll give you more detailed breakdowns of that in a minute. So again, here's Learning Drive. You're going to see a view that we're looking at from the site plan. And what you're going to see here is a new walkway here and over this way to make it a little bit easier of an entryway and more accessible as they're coming into the entryway. There is, the star garden is going to stay the same. There are some features in here, this area that I'm circling right now is going to be the other playground. And for example, we're thinking maybe that would be suitable for grades two through six, which is where our biggest priority is. There are going to be rain gardens, again, to get there, and sustainability in there. And this equipment in here is sort of our biggest item, which is a climbing tower. So the biggest piece of feedback we have, again, from kids, from parents, and from staff, was having something related to climbing for the bigger kids. So that's where the climbing tower is going to go. And then there are other small spinning elements that are there. And then there's a three-way swing area that's over here, and then some other kind of smaller climbers that are here. Then there's going to be kind of a similar open space, but it's obviously going to be regraded. And you'll be able to see some areas that are raining where there's, we can catch racers that are made, created to be able to fix the drainage and some of these engines installed around so that you don't have to worry about so much of the skating pond issue that we got. Over here, we fly into more natural play. The plan is to construct a giant hill, and by giant, I mean it's a big hill. A big hill here. And then on this hill, of course, the outdoor area would be for sledding, which would be great to have another activity. And then on this side, there's going to be a climbing place to climb up the hill and a giant slide down into a multi area there. But there's also kind of a path where it's ADA accessible and kids can even get up to that area of the map. This is, speaking of the path, this is kind of like a, this can almost be kind of a roost track for, for that going link. So it provides ADA access and allows kids to really access every single part of the playground. Over here, right next to the school, is the plan for where we would install the Pivotalion that has been deleted, and that's a perfect place for it because not only is it easy access from cafeteria with kids coming out, they could wind up eating lunch or snack out there, but it's so close to classrooms and multiple door access points that we hope that there's a lot of construction in the new space happening out there as well. We, this would be considered kind of a lower playground, maybe some number of equipment, so maybe some smaller structures there, some spinners, like a couple other pieces of equipment there that would be suited to K through two level. But again, not blocking it off. We want kids to challenge themselves, but just making sure that there are safe options for all the levels that we have here at GBS. Over on this side, we're recommending the removal of the tennis courts. And we did talk quite a bit about removing the tennis courts. We surveyed a lot of people and got feedback, and they primarily just said they're empty, they're not used. And they would be expensive for us to repair and fix. And we would prefer that we have an open space to create where we have a soccer pitch in there. So the advantage of having this open field space plus an open field over here is, and it's a big advantage to us, is that they can have a class out for, who says? Well, we also have a class out for PE. So we can serve both of those needs at the same time, and everybody has enough space to do what they want to do. Also, some of the younger kids' sports through the rep department still do some soccer where we are, and they would still be able to have access to that and soccer pitch that field over there. And then over here, we would keep the existing basketball court, but also move and have some four-square areas and the dog outback over there. One of the concepts didn't have the dog outback, and that was just not acceptable. Everybody made sure that the dog outback moved into this area. Shade trees all around, fixing all of the drainage. We didn't feel it was necessary to reinstall an irrigation system. We don't use it currently. We've not used it for many years. So we didn't think that that would be an expense that we would want to incur. For those people who aren't familiar, I'm not forgetting to point out anything, thanks for reading that. It's a wonderful design. It really does suit all of our needs.
I just thought of one question. Assuming the pre-K play area stays, the name is an hazard.
Yeah, there are some pretty strict laws that pre-K either has to have a separate playground or if they use the playground that's at the school, they can only use it when other kids are around. And they can't go on certain type of programs. So it's best for them to keep pre-K and all that.
See, how many, like the pavilion, I don't know if that's part of this discussion, but how many students could actually either be under this pavilion or, I don't know, it's a bit of a large.
We're hoping that we can have it, hope that we can run these step up lunches, where we could have two grade levels out there eating at a time.
That's a lot. That's good.
Yeah. Questions?
What the big question was, when you said, "Call?"
Just make sure I can hear you.
I just want to reiterate, we're calling it a K through two playground, not a three, six playground. There's a lot of concern that we're going to leave them two in each level. That's not the case. It's challenged by choice. Something that we'll see on the boards.
And I think what is really exciting about this is that we have a lot of feedback about the natural play. The kids were so excited about the idea of having the bill for sledding and climbing and rolling there on the big slide. But they're equally excited about still having equipment. So I think that this really balances, you know, all of those things. Okay. So as we're looking at the school project cost, it would be $820,000, which would result in us, our proposal is that the board moves forward with a $750,000 bonus. I know that that sounds like a really big number, but when you're getting down to what things actually cost and when we're breaking it down, it makes a lot of sense. So the site work, which will be current demolition, drainage, fixing all the drainage estimation, regenerating, maybe landscaping, and all the blankets under the equipment would be $318,273. And again, these are estimates because this has to go up to bid at some point. The equipment, which would be the play equipment itself, including things like the pieces of equipment plus a bike rack and insulation, would be $312,527. I get a lot of questions about why equipment is so expensive. And it really hustles a lot with what the companies need to do to have equipment that is certified as safe for children to play on for decades. So the companies really have to go through incredibly thorough process to sell something that our insurance company says, yes, this is okay for your school playground. And that has to deal with a lot of the costs right now. Permitting legal or for the works cost would be about $17,500. Design and engineering cost on going for the whole rest of the project. Design and engineering cost on going for the whole rest of the project, we're estimating at about $50,700. The contractor markup, we're estimating at about $60,500 and contingency fund for about $60,500. And all of that together will mean that the total cost. So our fundraising and cost that we already inferred, we have currently raised $46,215 from the original commitment that the grounds and playground committee said that they matched the town's original $50,000. So with an additional $3,785 as of today, we will reach our $50,000 goal and we would receive an additional $10,000 as soon as we reach that $50,000 goal because that was one of the donation promises. The current balance in the playground expendable trust is $50,952.7 cents. We have so far with the site engineering plan and the survey and the SC group's design process, we inferred $41,500 approximately so far, or about up to that. I believe that's still for the SC group, but that's the max thing for the contracted one. And this means that that puts us at about $69,454 for getting started with the project outside of the bond. So we looked into what kind of a bond we would recommend. A 20-year bond, which is 3% interest, would result in a total interest rate of $236,250. A 10-year is 2% interest with the total interest rate of $93,750. So we're going to recommend a 10-year bond, which would give us a savings on the interest of $142,500. And if we look at the tax impact, it's a 10-year bond, but it's really eleven years because next year we just pay the interest on the bond and then you start the 10-year payment after that. So if you look at the beginning, next year we just pay the interest. So the median price right now in ransom is $400,000. So basically this is the tax impact for the thousand for the bond if it passes. And then in parentheses, you would see if you, for example, had a $400,000 home, this is what it would match your annual taxes. So next year, we'd add $12,000. For the first four out of the 10 years of payback, it's 16 cents per thousand, so it's about $16,400 additional in your taxes. The following four years are 58 cents, so about $60 a year would be added. And then in the final two years, it goes down to 14 cents, and it would be about $56,000 total in your taxes. So we do still currently have a bond, so we still have six years after this to pay off the current bond. So I just wanted everybody to have a quick visual of what, how this would hold her back with the bonds that were currently paid, which is still on the 2,000 feet renovation. So in this proposed budget, you know, that's really just that 3% impact. And then you have six years where you would have an overlap of the principal interest of the renovation playground bond. And then after 28, 29, it would drop down here because the other one will be paid off. So we may look at the overlap area for about six years. There are some, I just want to let you know, there are some other funds available if you want to consider anything like this. There are SRF funds. I'm going to say that I need to let you know that those are there, but I'm also going to recommend that you don't use them. So there are concerns with federal requirements for all construction projects under the SRF grants. And basically it's that we would be obligated to follow Davis Bacon rules, which means we're going to get the highest labor costs in the world. And that could make the project more expensive, but it could also affect the bids on the project. So that's a good reason to stay away from the SRF funds. And we don't have a ton of money in the SRF funds, so I don't think it's worth it to infer those additional costs. I think that you could consider SRF funds after we get our needs assessment back, but maybe we could use it for some things, like some tables for the pavilion or some pieces of play equipment and things like that. It could probably be a good use, but just not for the construction itself. And in one of our trust accounts, the school construction trust from that, remember that $200,000 surplus we were talking about? There's still $79,608 available there. You could access that trust, however, you want to think, I don't think right now we need an addition to GBS, but if at some point, if you feel like you want to make sure that that's always there in case you need to do some kind of two other classrooms or something on GBS, then you could access it for this and then start replenishing that fund. Or you could just leave that where it is because I think that amount would probably, like we had some seed money to do our site survey and our design. You know, that money can be there for that if you need to do additions and that. But those are the other funds that are open to you. In terms of overall timing, we do have an issue where whenever you're doing any kind of big project that is over 50,000 square feet, where I think at least double that, maybe more, we would have to get alteration of tour name permitting. And we would have to decide, and this is if the bond passes, we would have to decide if we make the construction to do this all at once or if we complete at least one section, like that priority grade two through six playground, the upper playground, this summer in the pavilion or something, and then complete the whole rest of the project the following summer. And the reason for that is that our engineers and designers are saying the AOT, the alteration of tour permits are sometimes taking four to six months to go back. You know, so we're really, we've really been running that, how much time do we actually have to build in the summer? We might not have enough time. How much would we want to be doing during the school year, rushing against waiting for the ground or for these, those kind of things? So if the bond passes, those are some things that we'll have to decide later. The factors really that we need to look at are kind of the permitting timeline, final plans and specs, and the construction bid going down and select commitment and then contractor availability. Those contractors are open right now. In terms of the timing regarding this tax year, in absolutely all articles passed this year as proposed, because we are having a good tax year this year, they will go, everybody's, including the bond, everybody's taxes will go down, I think, four cents per thousand. So even if the bond passes for next year, taxes will still go down. But I do want to remind everybody, it's a one-year tax break because of swept. So when you look at that first bond payment, that's 16 cents per thousand, it's going to fill up again in the SRF budget and the CD and everything. One thing that I really want the board to consider is that we are going to recommend that we move forward with the pavilion this summer whether or not the bond passes. And that was one of the things that I put in the discussion of that, you just stated fund balance moving forward. My recommendation would be that we continue, no matter what happens, to build the pavilion because I believe we're still going to be eating outside, spending a lot of time outside. And we already have the amazing commitment from AV Bar. I think they're really going forward. So it would be great to just keep going with that. If we wound up renting tents again, we would be spending another $20,000 compared to spending about $50 for this permanent structure. We have already spent $31,000 on tent rentals since the pandemic started. So that one seems a little bit like a breaker to me. You can incorporate funds from the current budget with the same tax impact that you're looking at. And the pavilion's already incorporated into the design and engineering class, so it's actually just ready to go. If you want to do that. And I'm going to take a sip of water because I've got a lot. Questions, discussion and action? Thank you. Okay, so questions and discussion from the board?
Well, I just wanted to mention, I was talking with Cindy yesterday and realized that I was a playground user in the 1950s. And I, I realized that the playground I used looked a lot like the one we have now. And it seems to me it's time to move into this century.
I'm really appreciative of the environmental emphasis with this whole design. It's wonderful because they're not just going out to play, they're going out to learn, to park. That's really important. We need stewards.
Yeah, I really appreciate the, being able to have the, the idea of having those separate spaces where folks can be out at recess and classes can be outside simultaneously in sort of designated areas. I think that's really a big benefit to it. And I would say my other point that I would be in support of right now is moving forward with the pavilion project. I think it's.
Yes, yes.
That makes absolute sense.
It's a lot of money to spend on semi-permanent tents.
Yeah.
And we need an investment and just better serve.
And now we have the design. We know where it goes to fit in that design. So if we need to do stage construction.
I'm just looking for the PDF. I don't know if I need to bring that stuff. And so Cindy, just for, to reiterate it for clarity, at the end of the presentation, you said that so if the operating budget article, the CBA article and the bond all pass, that would be a decrease.
You would see a decrease in taxes of four cents per thousand.
Of four cents per thousand, okay.
Because our operating budget is down. Even though the CBA is 20 cents per thousand, the swept difference makes a difference for us. But just, it's also because that first year of the bond would just be that 3% impact. So that's, that's the smallest year of the bond. And it actually could change depending on some of the other decisions you make later in the board meeting. It could be even less. And by less, I mean more savings than four cents per thousand. Or no, it wouldn't, right? Never mind. It would be about four cents per thousand, right? I think you're probably also excited about the plan that you don't have any questions.
Very current of you to.
Personally, the $80,000 is all within the construction trust. I would eat the, I think the $80,000 is in the construction trust right now. Given that. I think I'd be deserved to be in the place that. If it's not possible, I would say that is. But I would say that's. We'll have the $80,000 sitting around just in case. Especially if it's too much fast, it's sort of never seen addressed drainage of all those conditions.
So if we decided to use that school construction trust, would that bring down the amount that would, that we would bring forward for the bond?
So you could, you could, for example, reduce the bond, you know, if you could reduce the bond to, you know, if you wanted to do 675,000 or something like that, that's $700,000. Or you could just give the grounds renovation playground committee $80,000 more because we can find more equipment. Because we do cut that out. I also wanted to let you all know that I'm actively writing grants at this stage. It's tough to get grants since we have a plan, but now they do have a plan, it's really much easier to start writing grants. So none of those are guaranteed, but, and we wouldn't know for a while, but I just wanted to let you know that that's still happening too.
If you guys speak up, because people can't hear you. Okay. Will the, I don't, I don't know anything about playground construction. Is the, if, so you said there was some like equipment that had to be pulled back? If, will the sort of like, will the plan leave room for adding equipment if we were in a future position to fund future equipment? Okay, so there would be space and there would be sort of like infrastructure available to like, let's say in, you know, two or three years, there's a surplus or something like that, we could add some equipment onto the playground at that time.
Yeah, there's a couple of things that shifted, like the big three base swings. Those completely got pulled out someplace and put someplace else because we moved the equipment. But were those where we could consider putting some of the spinners that were taken out or some of the baskets, we'd use those kind of things. Also, they took out some of the, like, complete paving everywhere. So that's something that people wanted to do in the future, like over towards the soccer pitch going out to that part of the lawn for other accessway. Those are things that we pulled out to get down to 750 and those are things that could still happen in the future.
And I agree with the, you know, that, that balance being there, having, it's, it's intended use was this purpose. Yeah, it's using that wood for us closer aligned with the numbers that we were looking at previously.
So are we talking?
I'm going to pass this down.
So are we talking about using almost all of the funds in the construction trust or maybe something like 50,000? It's up to you. You can decide how much to use out of that completely. What you can use, you know, you could go to 67, 675, which would kind of deplete, almost deplete, not really. I mean, keep the trust open. Or you could say, you know, I want to, we use 50 out of it, make the bond 700,000 and have a bit more buffer in the end at some point.
I think the other thing I'll throw out there is the likelihood of us seeing the 2% rates after this year is next year. That is, I said that we will actually get rates over the next session. So if we ever do this, certainly we'll have to do it now. That'd be, I think that'd be in favor of doing something like 700,000, 0.50% of the construction. Trust, that still leaves us about 30,000 in there for anything that's not expected.
No, out of the, the trust.
Out of the trust, that way you're working at 700,000 for the 10 years of 2%.
What are, so are people in favor of the 10-year?
Yes.
Yeah.
And taking 50,000 out of the, and taking 50,000 out of the construction.
Karen just did a quick search and the. The, the bond, the last bond that they sold was 1.41%. That was the actual sale price. So they're pulling 2% for the July sale, but it did come under that. So it is a good time to borrow money.
I'm trying to piece together our motion from this discussion. So I'm just. So it, it sounds like, and we can discuss this more, it sounds like from what I'm hearing, people are in favor of approving a bond of $700,000 over 10 years. And taking. What was the amount from the video? From the trust? Would those be two separate? Yeah.
So the bond, the article, that's when you would move to the article. That's where you would actually officially have to move to the bond hearing next week. For the 50,000, you have to hold a public hearing to be able to access the funds from that capital trust account, which can happen at any time. And then the other decision will be if you want to refer the Pavilion, you would have to say that you're going to encumber up to $50,000 of current funds to work with the Pavilion project.
Is that. Current funds, does that. Answer the anticipated fund balance question?
Yeah.
So it would be from the, it would be current funds from the anticipated fund balance.
But it doesn't change any of the numbers that you saw tonight?
Meaning it doesn't impact the four cents, four cents savings.
CBA summer construction, is that?
Yeah.
So how does that line up with the playground if everything?
We don't know because it's going to depend on how fast those permits go, the engineering costs, I'm not the engineering cost, but the. Contractors bidding, it's really that preparation training, that's where you come in. So if we wanted to say, we're not going to do anything except the Pavilion this summer, we could do the Pavilion and then hold off for a year and have the entire project done in the summer of 23. The other thing is I think people are pretty anxious to get something going. So what we can do is while we're doing the Pavilion project, we could possibly do that other playground at the same time. So that we have some forward motion and that's our highest priority area, but then leave the entire rest of the project for summer of 23. So since we're dealing with so much more than 50,000 square feet, I think the chances are pretty slim that we're actually going to get that, the OT permit and be ready to go with the contractor to do everything this summer. But I think it's just too tight. So the question would be, would we want to get something done?
Yeah, and given it saves the tent rental, it makes sense to just go ahead.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve, it would be Article One, so it would be to approve Article One for a. Do I need to say all of those words that are there?
No.
Because that would happen next week. But that's what I thought. Okay, for the GDS grounds renovation and playground bond for $700,000 over 10 years. Second, we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, and then we need a motion to encumber up to $50,000 from the current funds for the construction of the Pavilion project.
Second.
I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Christine. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, and so that will move forward for the, the first part, for the article will move forward to the bond hearing next week. Okay. Anything else you need from us for the grounds renovation and playground projects other than the next thing?
Other than the next.
Which is the clerk of the works job description. So we have in our board packet, we have a copy of the clerk of the works job description and I think Sydney has some updates for us on things we asked for from the last meeting.
So in the last meeting, you had asked that I send the clerk of the works job description on to some people. So I sent it to Steve Schneider, that Eastman, to Duncan Wood, who was recommended by Christine and to our S E group partners who work with clerk of the works all the time. So based on their recommendations, we just made a few pretty prominent changes in terms of, and all of them were really helpful and very happy to change things. Just mostly some language in terms of change orders, notification of safety issues and just the purveying those kinds of things. One thing that I recommend that I add just at the bottom, or we can even put this in the app when this goes out, is just that there was a final recommendation that came in after this one year board packet, just to note that travel time will only be billed if we request that the clerk goes someplace. So we're not going to bill them to come to and from Grantham or to and from the site, but if we say we need you to go to Conover to work on a permitting issue, then we would give them travel for that.
Any other questions and discussions from the clerk of the works job description? Okay, so we'll need a motion to approve the clerk of the works job description.
Some more.
Second. I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Christine. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, our next agenda item is the after-school program and we have a memo from Sydney in our board packet regarding this and a big fund balance.
Yeah, so this is something that obviously we've had a lot of conversation with the community about that at the beginning of the year about a new backdoor after-school program. It has not been easy to run after-school program this year and it was actually pretty cumbersome even before the pandemic because it became wildly popular. And it's, it takes its toll on the SAU and on GDS in multiple ways that I outlined in the memo. Our recommendation is going to be, and I don't know if Mrs. Reed will want to add something at some point, but our recommendation is going to be that the district chooses to contract out our after-school program to Camp Composten. They run the after-school programs throughout the area. They have a great reputation and I think there are some pros and cons that. The cons would be that we would be looking at basically, right now we have a nice situation where our school social workers, we could run the after-school program and add, you know, added benefit to some kids who really need it most because we've been prioritizing kids with needs this year due to the pandemic. We wouldn't have that unless, and this isn't a conversation for tonight, but unless the board would like to use some of the other funds to keep a half-time social worker for part of next year, which is something that we can explore later on. There are a lot of pros to contracting it out. We did have quite a few parents ask us why we didn't contract it out, you know, in the year. It would just basically look that, just some of the bigger pros, I think that parents would probably be happy that Composten would do Fridays. Because we only do Monday through Thursday because we haven't ever been able to staff it fully. Only Monday through Fridays, but Composten would be able for Fridays. Mrs. Reed has met with them and gone over their program and they do a lot of the simple work that we do in terms of healthy bodies, social lunch planning, collaborative play, et cetera. One of the things in terms of just the, it does put a pretty large burden on all of our other aspects of payroll, of, you know, of attendance, of, you know, all those other kind of bureaucratic things that we do behind the scenes. It does add a big toll there. Another pro would be that for any of our staff who wind up working in after-school program, it's a pro for our kids because Composten would continue to hire staff from here. It's a pro for the district because whenever any of our support staff, for example, work for the after-school program, it moves them into the country retirement and then the district winds up having to pick up the mutual retirement cost. So it would, it would be a financial pro to the district as well to not have that added expense on there. And Mrs. Reed, did you want to?
The current director of after-school. The current director of the after-school program for Composten has been working with Mrs. Rue on various projects. So she does have a connection to Rent a Village School Park and they have a very similar philosophy, which is pretty neat. I thought she was great, like great information she could mention, which I think it's everywhere, staffing's an issue for them right now. But if they take over our after-school program, they are, like Sydney said, willing to hire our staff, are people who want to work for them. It would obviously be a more, because there's, that's pretty defined people here, but so very.
Yeah, and the pay rate is comparable between one weekday and Composten. So, you know, it wouldn't be a big difference if they pay at all. They would also unwilling, you know, we have some strict attendance limits right now. We don't know what's getting out of it with distancing or how many people could be there, but we estimated that Composten would be able to take up to 65 students, which is currently kind of in the 50. And in the best of circumstances, whether we kept it or Composten did, before the pandemic, we were up to 70 or something, just that's way too big. No matter what happens, there still has to be a limit on the attendance, but I know Composten will take at least 15 more kids than we currently count.
So would this location be at Composten?
No, it'd be here.
I can turn this, how would they get here?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That was my question. So they. Composten runs after-school programs around the area. So they, like they have a site in London, in some of these, Lebanon, I think. So they have, they do, there are after-school programs onsite at several schools in the area already. Other questions from the board?
I know they periodically have field trips to Composten. That's nice.
The other thing just to consider is if he, if the board decides to contract out of Composten, we are going to still have a surplus in after-school program. So while Composten does have the ability for students to apply for state aid for class, I would also recommend that maybe the board preserve some of that surplus and maybe you could supplement some of the kids who might still struggle to pay if they didn't qualify for state aid. That might be a good use of those surplus funds in the future.
What would be the timing? Soon or later.
Starting with the follow-up next to.
And I think that, yeah, I think that's the call to, we actually sort of make it official with Composten signing. I just want to make sure we don't, if this falls through some strange reason, that we're not stuck to, like, just again, scrambling to figure out what.
I think if the board approves it, we can just start the process going. We actually, we had to do some steps before we brought this to you. For example, the state had to come out and do an inspection of the, of the facility to make sure, look at the levels of, you know, the population and the capacity for how many kids. So all of that's already been done. So there are some things that are already set in motion.
Yeah, and I would just recommend that we see this, you know, sort of get that as soon as possible. There's enough runway.
I was just gonna say thank you to both of you and anybody that was involved in this or exploring this and bringing it forward. I think there's a lot of, I think just looking at the sort of pros and cons that you outlined there, one of the things that I think about is that I know there is a tremendous amount of administration that has to go with this program. And so I was thinking about what's the, what are we sort of, in the system, ourselves to gain in terms of time and opportunity from, I know specifically from Brenda, who does a lot of the work of helping to manage this program in terms of like numbers and payment and that kind of stuff. And for Kristen, whose job is to be the principal of our school and has also sort of taken on a lot of the administrative role of an after-school program, which isn't necessarily. It's, it's of course supportive and beneficial to the students and the families and the community, but it is not like central to the mission of educating all students in our community. So I, one of, I think one of the pros and cons that for me, that one of the pros that is not, I mean, it's on here, but I think it's really about sort of that, like, how are we utilizing our resources? We have limited resources in people and in time and we have an organization that's right next door that provides a really outstanding after-school program. So to be able to partner with them and contract with them and take advantage of that seems like it would be, I'm, I'm very supportive of that. I had actually, I had actually brought this idea up years ago at a board meeting of having Composten do our after-school program. So I'm glad that it was come back in a way that I think is really, could be really beneficial to the community and to the administration of the district.
One quick question. With, with Composten, is there. Are there attendance requirements? I guess what I'm getting, getting to say is about, for instance, if somebody has school lessons after school for three or four months and have to pull them out three, four days before fall to get those, is that at all? It's kind of, do students from attending after-school program because of that or?
My contractor exactly speaks about it. I know that when we were talking. Costs. So I can't exactly speak to that 100%. I know when I was talking costs with her, she talked about what the cost will be for someone coming full-time. She said, and then she said, and of course it'd be less if they didn't come every day. So making use of children that you don't have to come every day, you'll help you come right out. So I can't.
That's all right. I know, you know, students with that's all, skiing and all that stuff.
Any other discussion? I'm going to just let Denise join us again before we make a motion or take a roll. We'll just hold on just a moment until we make a motion on this agenda item. Just gonna come back to silence. I can't take a drink with my mask on still.
No, it doesn't work.
After all these years.
Like kind of fifty-linguistic.
Oh, man. That doesn't work either. Still doesn't. Or get the, the produce bag over at the grocery store. Or the bag when you're walking your dog.
We can, we can always move on and then go back to that relatively cheap.
Let's see what our next, I think she'll want to hear our little bit updates. You won't be able to eat it through the mask. Yeah, Happy Lunar New Year.
Great, they're cooking. They're supposed to look like queens because it's Lunar New Year and they're supposed to represent fortune for the upcoming event.
And it's Groundhog Day tomorrow. Everyone should remember. I don't know. It is a very popular holiday at our house though, so there's been. I'm never right and the Groundhog is never right. So. I know.
So I just wanted to add that earlier I've asked that we won't for many times.
So I just wanted to add that earlier, I've asked that we won't for many time for articles tomorrow. They'll be ready till Thursday and Friday.
Okay, alright, is it the board? Remember to go in on video signatures Thursday and Friday, Thursday or Friday.
If, if you don't see me on Thursday.
I will.
Thank you.
You know it's kind of.
She will track you down.
So I do think Thursday is like likely because of the weather.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Friday's gonna be jolly.
So I thought it was Thursday.
Well, no, it's Thursday night, Thursday afternoon, Friday.
Yeah, so it's Thursday, Wednesday afternoon late and then Thursday morning.
Okay.
And by the way, it was, it's Tuesday and I can't tell you how many people asked me if I would call this a day already.
Well, we're excited.
It's not hard to understand. We need some people to be ready. Okay.
Okay, so to wrap up our discussion of the after school program, from the conversation, it sounds like we're moving towards approving contracting after school program with Coniston YMCA. So we would need a motion to approve the contract between the Grand School District and the Coniston YMCA for the after school program for the 2022-23 school year.
Would you want to say like contract processing?
Yes, the contract to move forward with the process of establishing contracts.
Second.
Alright, so I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so our next agenda item are COVID updates and we do have some updates in our board packet.
This is very brave in terms of COVID updates, but there was, when we changed from the ten to five day, the board just didn't very explicitly state that this would apply to kids who are unvaccinated coming back from quarantine, which is also a change from ten to five days with testing recommended again on day five. So we talked a lot about coming back from isolation after having COVID. We didn't explicitly talk about quarantine, so I wanted the board to actually act on that officially to put that in our heads.
So these are due to have like an exposure, a family member, a household contact. And so they are unvaccinated and so we, they are currently required to quarantine for ten days after a household exposure.
But we could have them come back five days after last exposure with a negative test.
Which is what the HHS recommends.
They are, yep. I did check with Mrs. Islander today, so we have had, like with our ten to five day switch, we've had nineteen staff and students trying to come back after five days. Thirteen of the nineteen are still positive on day five. And the remaining six that were negative, the majority of those people were actually kind of asymptomatic with tested positive anyway. So we're seeing what I've been hearing, it's interesting because I've been hearing this from kind of the informal check-in from school districts, we're seeing about the same percentage as that about seventy percent of people are still positive on day five.
It sounds like the process.
Yeah.
Okay, so we would need a motion to approve the change that unvaccinated students may return to school after five days of quarantine, so long as they test negative on day five to return on day six. If they had a positive test on day five, they would complete the full ten day quarantine.
Well, they have COVID at that point, so it wouldn't be quarantine.
Oh, right, that's what I said. If they tested positive, then it would be, okay. Yep, and that would reset.
Reset, and they could re, retest on day five of that.
Right. Yes, so unvaccinated students may return to school after five days of quarantine as long as they test negative on day five to return on day six. So a motion from Leslie and a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay. I would just highlight, and I know we have the minutes from the progress monitoring committee here. I would just, and it is in the minutes, but I would just highlight, I think there, there is a different toll happening right now for teachers and support staff in terms of a real challenge that we heard during those meetings for feeling like they're losing those kids that are out four or five to ten days, losing touch with them, they're losing ground in terms of their academics. And there isn't a tremendous amount that we can do right now. I know, you know, the teachers and the staff and administrators are thinking about ways that we can stay connected with those students, but the real, the reality is that for some students, they're not able to stay connected during that time, so they're not able to do, work well at home or to, you know, to, to stay connected. And that is being felt pretty like deeply by the, the staff who's may have, maybe having multiple students in their class that they're having that experience of feeling like they're, you know, some progress that they've made with those students is sort of slipping away. And so I just wanted to highlight that, to think that that was a, a different challenge than one that we've heard up to this point, because we are seeing the most number of students out for those extended periods of time because of COVID than we've seen to this point. So in this never ending storm of changes and challenges, that was a, that was one that we hadn't seen as sort of highlighted before this last meeting, and I think that'll just continue for some of our staff. Any other COVID updates right now? Okay. Alright, so annual meeting procedures, just a quick review of what we're looking at next month. So we will have the meeting, it'll be set up just like this, so we'll have, we'll be here in the, in the gym. And we're all waving by to a former board, not her. Well, we'll be set up here in the gym, we'll have CD here, folks who are coming. We are, you know, asking and requesting folks to wear masks as per our building and district policy, but we also understand that it is, folks have the right to vote and there is a different set of requirements and standards for that. So if we do have folks that are coming to be part of, that are residents of Grantham, that are coming to exercise their right to be part of the voting process, which they of course have the right to do, who do not want to wear a mask, we will have a separate room set up for those folks. So for people who are watching, who are coming to the meeting here in the gymnasium, we will be asking folks to wear masks and you will be able to vote. You will have to be here in person with us in order to vote. So folks who have been joining us virtually, we so appreciate your involvement and engagement. You are welcome to join us virtually if you are not a resident of Grantham or if you are a resident of Grantham who understands that you will not be able to vote during the annual meeting. All votes have to be cast in person. We'll go through the, the annual meeting as we have previously. So unlike last year, it'll be in person with supervisors of the checklist present to register or to get, not register, to get people checked in off of the, the voter rolls. And we'll proceed with the meeting. And we do not have a March Board meeting after that. The annual meeting is our meeting for the month. Any other policies or procedures for annual meeting that we should discuss tonight? Yes.
I was just gonna suggest, can we get one more hand mic where the table's here? Sure, I think you'd make it easier. Absolutely.
Another one. And we will, we will, we are still gonna have the meeting virtual, yes, right? Just so people won't be able to participate in the voting right or virtual.
And they have no option to do that, like at some of their times during the day in person?
Okay, no, all voting has to be done in person in the, in the meeting for the annual meeting. For the election, for candidates, that's a different day.
Yep, but there are no emergency rules for annual meetings here.
Okay.
And I would.
Although I did love standing outside for eight hours last year.
We got to meet some people and it was nice in the sun, although windy.
Yeah, I remember the tent.
Very, yeah. I will say, I will just say, you know, for folks that are watching us virtually, I imagine there are people who feel more comfortable in that format this year. If you have concerns or you are wondering how you can best participate in a way that feels safe for you, please feel free to reach out to the SAU office, to, you know, to any of the board members. We're happy to, you know, touch base with folks that might want to participate and feel concerned about that. We know that that is still a concern for people. And we want to make sure that even though we do need folks to be in person for voting, we want to make sure that everyone knows that their vote is important and matters to us and we will work with you to find a way for that to be a safe experience for folks. Okay, anything else for annual meeting? Alright. Alright, so our next agenda item was candidates night. At this point for school, we don't have any contested races. We have two open seats with two filed, candidates have filed at the moment, which the filing period has ended, so that's where it will stand. Do we know if there are any contested races for town conditions?
I haven't heard yet about two.
Okay, so my recommendation would be at this point, so that since we don't have a contested race, that I don't think we need to have a school board candidate tonight. I would love for there to still be like short little white up, like a bio of each of our candidates just that can be sent out or available on our website, just so folks know a little bit about the people that are on the ballot, but I don't think we need to have a candidate tonight added into our very busy one. I mean, I love seeing you guys, but enough's enough, honestly. Anyone else have a different thought on that than? Okay. Okay, our next item in our board packet. I don't know why you guys keep doing this to me, Karen. Is a. You're not. Is a, oh, I'm sorry. Is a resignation, so we do have a letter here from Karen Lassard letting the board know of her intent to retire effective June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Brenda is shaking her head.
Feel free to turn it down.
Well, what I was gonna do is if I was better at spreadsheets and numbers, I was gonna make a chart that we could show just how much we need Karen to stay. I would like move the numbers around and like fill in different numbers and no matter what we did, it would still tell us Karen, you need to stay. That was gonna be my. So the board will need a, will need a motion to accept with very deep gratitude and sincere appreciation and just so much thanks for your work. And we will say more later, the resignation of Karen Lassard.
So moved with appreciation and sadness.
So we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay.
Karen, we're excited for you.
Yes, we are.
For you.
And we're feeling happy.
Time gets like slow.
And we will, we will say more later, so. Okay, we have until, what was it, June twenty, thirty? We have until June thirtieth to say thank you many times over. Okay, so our next agenda item, we do have three policies tonight. These are all first reading policies and they are in the board packet. So we're looking at policies EEAG, EF and EFA. Anything in particular you want to tell us about these policies, Cindy?
Mainly that we didn't have them and they're required by law, except one that just needed quick updating for from service management. I keep trying to move beyond the eight policies and they just keep coming.
Dragging it back. Okay, so we'll need a motion for the first reading of policies EEAG, EF, EFA.
So we, we still trust them, right?
Yep.
Sure.
Alright, yeah, go ahead, say. Yeah.
Um, EFA, they're saving the policy in the second paragraph, the lessons. There's some klutzy wording there. It says superintendent is the resident who is responsible for providing annual communication information. Maybe one of those words should be there.
Okay.
It's just all right. I'm really being sensitive.
Hold on.
I think, I think there should actually be a whiff between those two words. So providing annual communication is part of the law with information about the policy and procedures.
Yeah, that would work, okay. Hey. Ed, leave him something. I can be loud, but might as well. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve first reading of the, the policies I said before. Yes. No, we have one on the table.
We're discussing. I think we can vote, right?
Yep, so we have a motion from, we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Denise, correct? Alright, and so all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, alright, our next item on our agenda is the principals report.
And Mrs. Reed needs the microphone for she's.
Definitely do.
Yeah, she's gonna go into detail about where some data for us.
Did you just turn red?
The mic's gonna be set in the chairs. Beyond what I already said. But if I say that please switch something I found or. I'm sorry.
It's good.
He's a lot of sound for you. Yes, he is. Here we go. It's loading. So the first slide is showing our reading NWA test. And that is not, I think we had a little discussion about this last time. That's not a sweet test, that's something we're reaching for doing. So I find, you know, I look at the, the NWA test data versus the state SARS data. You have a lot of information for NWA, so I think it's really quite fun to look at. When you look at the NWA historical data, it is, as you can show, follow groups of kids on the biographical, where you can go across grade levels and see how certain grade performed in different years or different tests. On that bottom left graph, you can see, I wish I had like a color.
Right here, I found my first word.
You can see there's a dip in every grade level, the green, the yellow, and the red and the blue. And that is actually, not surprisingly, the test we took with the fall, right after we came home. And we took it in the fall and then we took it again in the winter after coming back in the, in person. And you can see we jumped back up and then have remained fairly consistent with our historical numbers. So I think that's exciting that we were able to get ourselves back up there. And I, I don't think it's a surprise, although we had that, that dip back really worked. Over on the right side, right bottom, that follows groups of students or, or classes. And you can see that there's that consistent rise, like you could also see on top with the. Not reflective in this, and you're gonna, when I show you the NWA for math, it's the same thing, is the NWA. But I want to just point out that, I can share that data with you later, but our. our class needs are consistently higher than we did in the, which is also very exciting. So we go on to the next slide, just picking three. This is our state data, our SAS data. There's not as much to look at here, they didn't, we didn't do the test in 2020 because of COVID, so we don't get that really nice cross-representation of data, but you can see that there is some fluctuation in the percentage of proficient or above proficient, but it's generally pretty consistent, and we're always above those percent of proficiency. Which coincides, I think, with what Denise was saying. And then the next slide goes back in NWA, but now looking at math. Same, same format, and really you can see this, there are similar trends that happened with reading. We have that dip after the whole learning event back up. Looks like kind of big fluctuations back and forth, up and downs, but in the grade scheme, the things are really small, up and down, so it's really quite. And then on the right side, again, seeing the, for the most part, growth. Just lose that on current segment. But again, except for grade three, fall 2020 and winter 2021, we are above the NWA being. On those two third grade tests, we're right exactly at the NWA. And then looking at math for SAS, again, the same, not as much data to look at to look for trends. Seeing similar fluctuations that we do with ELA, but fairly consistent throughout the years, and always above the proficiency. There's a lot of data to look at, I was telling Cynthia Casey-Silvain, I want to give a huge shout out to her, she loves data, and she and I, I think for weeks, had to throw in different graphs back and forth to try to find the best way to present everything. And she sent me something, and I didn't understand it, and she kept talking through it, and I recreated it, she didn't understand what I was. So hopefully, we came up with something we both understand, or hopefully.
Just one thing I noticed, I think in all the graphs, it's third grade, the youngest kids that you're showing data for seem to have the most impact.
So we kind of want to talk about this, and the over the period of never taking tests with.
Yeah.
So in both NY and SAS, it's, it's hard to say
That's true.
what the, you know, what the barrier was, but they've never taken standardized tests or, or a test on the computer like that, so it's a learning curve.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Cindy? And that was fast, so we wanted to send you to the.
Thank you. Any other questions for Christine from her report? Thank you for doing that.
Oh, you're welcome.
So our next agenda is the superintendent's report. I know one, I don't have a meeting to attend, except my report, with the exception that I did spend half a day down in Concord yesterday on the legislative update. So they walked us through the, I think, 138 education-related bills that are coming this year, so it's another mirror, working hard to keep up with everything that's coming. I'm going to take you through all 108 now.
She was, thanks.
We're holding our breath.
Any other questions for Cindy from her report? Thank you, and thank, I would say, Krista mentioned it in her, in her report, and I know that it's heavily on Krista's shoulders, but also shared amongst everybody in the school and the SAU. I know staffing has been very challenging, and I just want to extend the board's appreciation for whatever kind of puzzle, or magic, or like, hopes and wishes, or witchcraft you do to be able to keep things running and staffed, despite some real challenges in that area, so, thank you. It's huge. Yes. Okay, so our next agenda item is the consent agenda, are there any changes or questions to the consent agenda?
I just got one little question on expenditure fees. This is on page three of the expenditure report, provisioned contracted services. So obviously some additional unanticipated expenses, so is that coming out of reserve or other areas?
We can certainly get back to you, but I think so those were unanticipated.
Yeah.
Expenditures, looks like we've spent about as much as what we have in Concord, maybe a little bit more, so it looks like it's right on target, we should be able to cover that eventually in the budget.
Alright. Okay. Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? I think we'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second, I have a motion from Leslie and a second from Christine. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, we need a non-public session tonight?
Just only if the board wants it based on the correspondence that I recently sent. But it's up to you.
I don't, I don't think we need a non-public tonight, alright, so no non-public session tonight. Just a reminder for folks who are still with us, thank you for hanging out with us tonight for our double, this is counted as a double meeting. So thank you for joining us next week, same time, same place. We will have the grounds renovation and playground bond hearing, and then on March 1st here in the GBS gym, we will have the annual meeting. And I think that's all we have tonight. Okay, so we need a motion to adjourn. A motion from Leslie, we need a second. A second from Ed, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, and the meeting is adjourned at 8:36. Thank you all, have a good night.